Good evening and welcome to the Rutland Town School Board meeting on December 12th at 6:00 PM. It is now 6:01. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's start with an approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions, or changes? Seeing none, is there a motion? Thank you, Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's hear me in MS. I think, Colin? I didn't hear you. I was just making sure that you approved the agenda.
Yeah, I do. Just go for like a negative, but chime in and we can help.
Okay. Next up is teacher, staff, and community comments. We have a few teachers here. Any comments that you'd like to make? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to Rutland Town Schools' staff and students' highlights.
That would be... I have a slideshow. I shared it. I don't know if you can pull that up. Just a few pictures and it'll all come up here.
We can get a really nice close-up of our wonderful second grade teacher.
So, in case you don't know who I am, Heather Norton, second grade teacher. My partner Maggie Prozo is not here today. She had a baby a few days ago. And her sub Cassandra is starting a great job. So it's just me for tonight. Just wanted to show you some highlights, things that have been happening in the first quarter and the start of second quarter. So what's been happening? Click to the next slide. So we're gonna just start in September. This was us meeting our new crews. Maggie's crew on the left and mine on the right. And in September, basically, it's just getting to know our kiddos, establishing routines, setting, you know, schedules, responsive classroom morning meeting expectations, introducing positive reinforcement tools. I use a marble jar. Maggie has a bucket filling sort of system. We have the kindness crew. Thank you. So we started something this year, dug the pug in our classroom, the kindness crew. So that's just a cute picture, spreading kindness wherever you are in the building and outside in the community. That's thinking. These are just some pictures of the kids playing in Maggie's room, just doing some math play. Maggie's kiddos. And my friends, same thing. They're clearly camera shy. Thank you. And then in the fall, we had our first field trip to Proctor, which was a great field trip. It was a math focus. The whole second grade went, and that was a hit. And in October, there's fire safety day. We also... That's Maggie's class? Yep, Maggie's class. And that slide is my class. It's always great. And then this is one of my favorites. In the fall, we do a fairy tale unit, and that is fairy tales, fractured fairy tales. And at the end of the unit, and Maggie was a good sport. She's new in second grade. This is her first year. She said, "I'll do it. I'll do it." And so we both did an end-of-the-unit mock trial where will Curly Pig be found guilty? So the kids practiced reading a script, and we usually have parent involvement. This time, we had just the kids being the cast of characters. It was great. They act out the script, and I think the next slide is actually a little... Oh, sorry, that's my kids again. The next slide is a little clip. We don't have to watch the whole thing, but if you wanted to watch just a couple of quick minutes of Maggie's kiddos performing. Even just one or two minutes. It's very brave of them, practicing fluency at the same time.
Tina, Tina, turn it up, please.
Yeah, Curly Pig.
Baby Wolf versus Curly Pig. They're coming in a fairy tale class in the time of day. The trick is people are scared. They have to charge with a public uncle. What's their ultimate statement? You're honored to choose. We will show you that. This is in the case of...
You don't have to watch anymore, but it's a great Curly Pig versus Baby Wolf, and then they both have attorneys, and there's a judge. And then the rest of the kids are the jury and Jack the Builder. So everyone has a part. It's a great kind of fully interactive end-of-the-unit for fairy tales. One of my favorites. And then the next one, we're moving into October. This is our big buddies. We have big buddies, Maggie's class and my class. We're big buddies with an eighth grade class. They come every Thursday morning, and we did corny jokes around Halloween time. And then we did mummy races outside, which was super fun, where the kids, little buddies and big buddies, had to partner and wrap each other in relay race. And it's a great kind of partnership, and they see their big buddies in the hall. Like, you know, it's a great kind of connection. The next slide, I think, is from our Halloween party. Parents are invited. We try to invite parents in once a month in some sort of either celebration or performance of some sort. The next one, sorry, Halloween party, Halloween party.
And Mrs. Norton, that's one of your goals this year, right?
One of my goals, once a month. It's usually once a quarter, but some of my team members, that's a lot for them with having parents, and they get a little nervous. They're fabulous. But so I'm doing once a month as a new goal. This is Maggie's Halloween party. Halloween party, photo booth. And then moving into November, some of our highlights for November, one of our science units was around landforms, and this was our end of the unit project. We did landform pizza boxes, where the kids actually had to research using their Chromebooks. We use a site called KidRex, which is super kid-friendly. It's kind of the kid version of Google. They pick a landform, research it. They had to write a paper and then create kind of a landscape out of clay with their landforms. And that's my class. Had it in the hall for one day, but it's a fire hazard. I have to take it out. So it's fine. And then thankful, our thankful celebration, we did a lot around being thankful and showing gratitude, and again, parents came in. And then the hand-printed turkey, because every parent loves a hand-printed turkey. And then in November, we also, around Veterans Day, did a, just a, you know, quick mini lesson on Veterans Day and kind of why we have that day off. And we also wrote letters to veterans, and I always deliver it to the VFW or local American Legion from the kids, which is, we super appreciate that. And then moving into December, can you believe it's already December? I can't. So this is just the kids outside. And then again, this was another big buddies project on the left. And then the right is a pajama day, and I know Maggie's class earned a pajama day with her bucket filling. So kind of a whole class celebration. This was from our holiday concert, which was, excuse me, a huge success. They're super cute, all dressed up. And that's us. We're off to a great start. There's Maggie, and that's me for Halloween as a wonder teacher. And we're off to a great start into quarter two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions or comments?
Looks like your kids are having lots of fun learning, so thank you for sharing.
They are. Yeah, we try to make learning fun.
Mrs. Norton, you got a new Promethean board, right?
I did get a Promethean board, and I don't want to brag, but it's... I'm okay with that.
I think one of the things is that the students were learning. I forgot some of the comments. It's just, it's good to see... It's good for students to see adults sometimes struggle and try something new, and they just gave Mrs. Norton some great words of encouragement.
They were super... I was struggling with trying to find the right pen to write, and one of my kiddos, and they were giggling, because then I erased the one page and had to move the other page, and I was like, ugh! And some of the kids were giggling, and one of my girls said, "Let Mrs. Norton just play with her new technology." And I said, "Thank you. We'll get it."
Alright, so moving on to old business. The second-floor update came hot off the press today in our...
Yeah, that was something that was shared at the last meeting as well, so it's the same numbers.
Okay, so it's not any different?
No, it's the same as that was shared last time.
So I think we were still looking for some more information after the minutes.
Yes, yeah, I talked to Louis about that today, too.
Yeah, see, maybe share that.
Okay. Tina, do you want me to update you on just like the flooring and stuff like that?
Yeah, I think we wanted to know the flooring, the paving, what it costs for a clerk of the works, and then just to make sure that we had all the soft costs.
Yeah, so I think all the soft costs were in that document that I, that should be shared. I can share it again. And then I did speak with Kelly and Louis today, along with Sherry. And the net-net is, in order to replace carpet, to do the abatement and the flooring, it's approximately a half million dollars, $500,000. That's to do everything. So he has a number of contractors that he's come, that have come in, and it would cost more to get more hard figures for that. But I said, "That's good just to start with, just to give us a ballpark."
So that's for the paving and the abatement?
That's not for the paving. We decided not to, I think, since we looked at some of the numbers that Louis gave us, I said, "Let's hold off on that paving." That's in our five-year plan. So I think that was for next year. Also, with the stormwater runoff, Kelly and I have met with the engineer, and for, his name is...
Patrick?
Patrick, thank you. And there's still some more suggestions that he has, and a lot of this is through Grant, and some of that may be moving where the buses are, so I'm wondering if we could finagle. Not sure of paving, but we're still waiting for some finalized recommendations from Patrick in regards to the stormwater runoff.
And that is also part of the second-floor project?
No, that's not part of the second-floor project, but just, when we think about paving, he had mentioned some ideas about moving the fuel tank, bussing, so I think before we talk about paving, we want to see where the stormwater runoff, where that ends up, the final recommendations of that. And Louis and Kelly have been great in communicating with Patrick, and I've been looped into that as well.
Okay, so basically, we have about 3.4 million plus half a million, so 39, or 3.9 million, including the asbestos abatement. And then I believe Colin had mentioned something about an investor packet. Are you bringing that with you, Colin, or did he want to mention it now?
I mean, yeah, I think once we get everything, all the finalized, at least as close as we can to estimated numbers, I wanted to, you know, create basically maybe 10 to 12-page slideshow that we can present to the community, to the voters, that says, you know, here's... Now, they asked a little bit about, I think it'd be important to talk about population estimates as far as, you know, where we are with kids, where we're objectioning with kids talking about why we want to do this, as well as, you know, the abatement and the mitigation. Very important with what's going on around the state right now to get ahead of that. And then just breaking it down with, the good news is, in the last month and a half or so, the bond bank rates are coming down, the long-term rates are coming down. So this could line up well for us, but also what it means to the tax base, what it means to your property tax bill when we do this. Just so that the voters can go to the booth well-informed. We present our best case of why we want to do this, why we should do this, why we need to do this, but also give them all the data that says, you know, here's the effects for you financially. And just in a nice, you know, maybe 12, maybe 10 to 15 slide pages that, you know, we could hand out, as well as have on our Facebook, on our webpage, that people can click through. So it's informative and also right to the point.
That sounds great. Thank you, Colin, for offering to do that. So we still don't have a clerk of the works estimate. Is that correct?
I thought at the last meeting you had shared that, Chris.
We don't have an exact number, no. We're running on that.
Right, I think there was like a ballpark. Or did you provide that, Tina?
I provided a very ballpark, because I'm not actually sure of it now that I've been looking at it.
Yeah, and Kelly had shared that he feels that he could do that, but I think Chris's recommendation, it should, right, it should be some, and the boards, it should be somebody else.
It's just especially because we've been so shorthanded in the custodian world. You know, hopefully, we won't be next year, but I don't want to take, I don't want to add to his plate. I would agree with Chris on that one. Colin?
And then, as far as presentation goes, our town hall day, or do we want to present it all together, or the option to pick? I mean, we should really be doing the mitigation upgrading work, and in the event that the voters don't approve the whole project, we want to be able to present it as two different items. Just a thought.
What's the harm of waiting a year if it doesn't pass, if we tie it together?
You asking me? I think every, cost goes up with everything.
Inflation, other than that.
Yeah, I mean, we can all share our personal experience with how everything has gone up in price. So I think that's what the board had discussed. The other thing is that we talked about like HVAC and other things.
Is that, the HVAC is included in the 500,000?
No, that's just the flooring.
I'm not, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'm not really sure I'm keen on more than a $4 million bond, but...
And Kelly did say, I mean, he can do a lot. I mean, Jeff has experienced a lot of the flooring himself, you know, that's, right, you can do some of that. But like you said, that's if you are fully staffed and...
And when he had presented this to the board, whatever it was, Kelly, like eight months ago or a year ago or whatever, he, we had looked at the options of doing it piecemeal versus doing it all at once, and there were definitely cost savings to doing it all at once.
Correct.
So, and he, I don't think we have the staff to support an all-at-once job with everything else that needs to be done in the school over the summer and things like that. Is that correct? Or not?
I'm not sure.
It would be tricky.
This should be done by a side contractor.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yep.
So it makes more sense to try to put it into the bond if we can.
And that was Ed Clark's recommendation, too.
Right.
He had said, "If I were you, I would do everything, your field."
So when you mention HVAC, what are you talking about? For the whole school or for just the second floor? Because I think we had that in the second floor.
The second floor, that's included in the second floor, but it was just to hear, I think we were waiting to get some numbers from Louis, too, in regards to our tax rate. So I also wanted to see what, do you want me to keep getting numbers for...
Well, I think we have to almost be very close to making a decision if we're going to go forward, because we have to start letting the community know what's coming, make sure that we're very well-prepared for the January 23rd meeting, pre-town meeting. And we want to make sure that we have everything, all our ducks in a row for the warning for the public. So I think we are trying to get that answer tonight, or very, very soon, right? What do you guys feel?
Yeah, I thought there would be more substance, but...
Substance to what, Tim?
Just, I mean, we've been talking about ballpark numbers for three meetings now.
Yeah.
And the first ballpark number went from like 2.5 to 3.2 million, so I thought we'd be fair tonight, but we're not, so...
Louis is coming late tonight to the meeting, but he did mention last time that a $3 million loan, we're looking at about a 2.3% increase to the budget once it goes through. So this won't be for next year, but it's something to keep in mind, because we do have to keep our increase in spending under 10%. And at least right now, our budget is close to a 7.2%, I think. So it's just something to be very, very aware of, because if we're increasing from 3 million to 4 million, then that'll be quite a bit more. So there's going to be, have to be cuts other places, too, I think. Colin?
Yeah, the new rates, the 30-year rates is 4.35, and if we add just the, just the upstairs, the 3.3, that's $59,712 of carry cost per million, so it's about $197,000 per year, which is a 2.05% increase that we'd be looking at for next year, as far as just the carrying cost of the loan.
This will actually be the 2026 one, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't go out to bond during next fiscal year. It'd be the year after, I think. If I understood.
And the good news is, rates potentially can be down, I mean, not a ton, but it's what we're looking at about, it's about whatever, if 3.3 million is about 195 grand.
Well, that's better than Louis had predicted last time, but it's still, if we add another million to that, or, not million, but 500,000, it would be closer to 3% or 2.8. What would it be? Because it sounds like if we're doing 500, that was only the floors. That wasn't the HVAC.
After me?
Yeah, well, I was just seeing if you could do that math real quick. If we added the 500,000 plus the unknown for the HVAC, so at least the 500,000, to the 3.3. And it would actually probably be closer to, it was almost 3.4 with the inflation. It was 3,385. And we don't have the clerk of the works in there either, so I would probably estimate it to be closer to 4 million with HVAC potential, or at least part of HVAC. I mean, I think it would be a good, it would be good to overestimate it. So if we overestimate at 4 million for the bond.
It's 2.43% increase.
2.4. Thank you.
I just messaged Kelly, Tina. The other thing is, we have our facilities report that we got back, and that may give us some, although we questioned some of those costs in that facilities report.
Correct, those costs are not accurate.
Correct.
And I think we'll be talking about that in the new year.
Correct.
You said they're not accurate, is it?
Well, they're ballpark, they're estimates. And I think that's one of the main sticking points around all this is, getting someone to come out and provide you with a quote is is very difficult at this particular time. And I think that when we were discussing this as a state, that was a big, one of the biggest concerns around the facilities. They'd said, "Well, you can just go out and just have people come out and give you more accurate quotes." It's difficult to get a contractor, one to answer a phone, phone call, to respond to an email, let alone to come out and give you a quote. They're just overwhelmed. And so it, that's just the reality of the world we live in, as a school district, as an SU, you know, as individuals. It's just, we're up against it, and I know that, you know, there is a time consideration, but, you know, we've reached out to, you know, just to the central office for a lot of work that needs to be done, and we have not heard back in months, and we will call people and they just not return phone calls, because they're busy. They just, they have good work. They don't really need to get back to us. So when you ask someone for a quote, there's a very good chance that they're not going to be able to come out, because they just don't have the time to come out and give you a quote for a job that they may, you know, may not do, so...
And that's exactly what Kelly, Kelly was able to touch base with some companies, but they said exactly that. Unless you have the money, we're not going to give you an estimate right now.
And so on these facility assessments, that we're in the draft phases, and once we have the final, we'll share. A lot of it really is just baseball and estimate and average and just projections. That's, and there are a lot of costs that say, "Well, that's, you know, too high." And other times, "Well, that's way too low." But it is baseball and just, you know, numbers you look across the state and just historical projections, just to kind of give us an idea. And so they've said that really, we should be looking at more about the work that needs to be done, and I know that around the towns, it was all just, there was nothing new or different. It was really just, you know, aging out of current systems in terms of what we're, what we're looking at here, so... And I know, as I said, I know it's frustrating getting quotes, but it's very difficult to get quotes, to have these numbers, so...
We hope at some point here that this will turn around and kind of get back to what the normal was, but this is all part of the COVID mess. And hopefully, we can, the economy can change that around at some point.
Well, we have a strained workforce. We just don't have, you know, any skilled laborers. Just, it's a perfect storm for...
Not going to be anytime soon.
And materials are defined. That's the other thing.
So right now, we also don't know exactly when we're meeting in January. It sounds like we'll be discussing later. But we do need to meet before the pre-town meeting.
Correct.
And we need to have enough time to turn around to get the information for Louis to distribute. Or is that more after the pre-town meeting, when we do the pamphlets and the little brochures?
Typically after that we'll provide pamphlets.
So the only thing we need to do is make sure we have our warning ready to go.
Correct. And there's a copy of that in the, it's in the packets as well.
Correct, but we could still be finalizing it as of the January meeting.
Correct. We could be doing it after the meeting, and Louis quickly enters a number and prints off copies for us to sign, so anticipate that.
So what would the board like to do right now? Do we want to make a decision or wait till January? I don't know what other, I mean, the only, only other information we could get is that HVAC and how much that would cost to add to it. Clerk of the works, we'll need to know that exact number.
I think we, I think we get it all in there, ballpark what we don't know to the high side. And really, again, part of the investor pack is to sell this to the community. I mean, you take a look, it seems expensive for us, but, you know, Stone's looking for $35 million, or maybe it was higher than that. Burlington's spending $162 million on a new building. Like, do we want to be there? You know, it's a lot of money, but we gotta, we gotta do the work in this building, or we're going to be staring at a $15 million bill five years down the line. So it's deferred, delayed maintenance, and, you know, everyone's expecting things to get back to normal, but what if they don't? I mean, prices are skyrocketing. Every day we wait, it's more expensive. At some point, you've got to take care of your facilities, upgrade things. Our population's there to speak to the second floor, so we just got to present it to them like, okay. I mean, if you want us to shoot it down, that's fine, but at some point, you got to pay the piper, so... We're already learning that the hard way with an elevator shaft and not doing this 20 years ago when we should have, so...
Just to double-check, is the elevator cost in there, too? Because it's not spelled out. Is that part of the construction cost? I just want to make sure that's in there.
I believe so.
Well, what happened to that bond money?
Well, we never went out to bond. It just didn't happen.
So it just went away?
Yeah. I mean, we could still use it towards the elevator, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't cover the cost of the elevator, and so it doesn't really make sense. We're trying to...
We didn't do a very good job of getting figured either for that.
Well, I, we didn't, I don't think we realized what was needed for the bidding at the time, so now we know.
I don't think people called us back. That was the other problem. Jeff, you gave us numbers, too, and that was...
I think it opened up a can of worms that we needed the second egress, which was not figured into the original bond.
Correct, and the person that did call us back said, "We're not touching that until you have the egress."
Yeah, so it was tricky. So basically, in order to start it, we have to do more work, which is how we decided to open this up. And I think I would like to double-check that the elevator's in the cost. It probably is, but I just, if we could double-check for next month.
Do you want me to email Ed?
I'm figuring it is, but I just want to double-check. And then for next month, I would like to just try to get a little bit more specific on cost, what it would cost for clerk of the works, and the exact, you know, have it written out for the flooring, not just a ballpark 500,000, but this is...
So that's what they can't do, and that's, Louis can talk a little bit about it tonight, because we can give an estimate on where we know asbestos is and where we think asbestos is. So Kelly was trying to, before we were short-staffed again, do a square... So Kelly was trying to, before we had, we're short-staffed again, do square footage for each room.
Well, what did he bring before?
That was years ago.
It wasn't that long ago, it was like two.
Three years ago?
Two, wasn't it really three?
Maybe two.
But but if we just took that and figured inflation into it, it should be a good ballpark, right?
Uh I think you'd be surprised at the costs that have increased from when that estimate was done. So um I think when Louis joins us, he can give a little bit more explanation on, I asked him to, just because this is not my area of expertise by any means.
Well, maybe we could just have something written down to go with it.
Right, that's.
For next, I I don't think we need Louis to discuss it further tonight, in my opinion, because I I hear what you're saying.
Okay.
We just want, you know, officially, if that's as official as it gets, that's what we get, right?
Okay.
We just want it written down.
Okay.
So otherwise.
So flooring and asbestos.
Whatever we, whatever we want to put into this.
And do you want me to try to look at HVAC too?
You can look at it and we can.
If we can try to get somebody to, okay.
Pretty sure that was in their proposal for the for the second floor.
For, correct, for the second floor, we were talking about if you're going to do the second floor, do everything together.
Do anything down here too, just see what.
But I was kind of waiting to see what the board would like, because this figure was shared at the last meeting. So I know I was looking at flooring and asbestos, but now we'll look at HVAC. And Kelly does have some estimates that he's received, but he wanted to kind of talk you through them, which Louis can do a little bit tonight if you want, or I can just have him put it in writing.
Um, so do I have a motion from any on the board for right now?
I mean, an alternative thought is, do you, I mean, do, does this need to be on March's ballot? Or can we hold a special ballot in April or May? Since we're not going to bond it out till next spring, summer anyways, I mean, that's what all these school districts are doing. I mean, Stone just went to a special vote in November. I mean, is that something potentially we should think about so we can pump the brakes or do we want to? I mean, that would be my first thought. The second thought is, let's overinflate and come to the tax papers with a bigger number to say, hey, obviously, we're not getting bids until we we show these people that we have money, um and then we can back it down. So that would be my two, two avenues. One, delay the vote for a special vote um at some point, a little later in the spring or on everything, we can get into it with as close to an estimate or on the high side again.
I I think we need to have something ready for the voters at the same time as this, as a school budget. Because if you do a special election, you're not going to get anybody come and vote.
Well.
Tina, can I just share? I did speak to Louis today and the reason I'm kind of pumping the brakes is that he says as of today, our tax rate is an increase of 21% with the student numbers. So that's why I think he was like, pump the brakes. So he just reviewed with us again a little bit about um, you know, Act 127.
So, yeah, so but but Louis, when he gets here, will explain.
Correct.
You will not, it will not be 20%, the taxpayers will not see 21%. There's a 5% cap that's placed on this year. It's just that that 16% will, it's it's be kind of delayed and deferred and so it's something that has to be addressed. And so that's something which he'll talk about tonight as we do budgeting around Act 127 and that Rutland Town is 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 disadvantaged by, you know, the the long-term weighting, uh peoples which we we anticipated. So that that is just something I think Louis will will just ask the board to consider is, but it's something which we, you know, they want to move forward with. It would just be looking at as we budget and as we move forward, there are going to be other things we just have to take a look at and consider just knowing that, you know, that we talked before about the Esser Cliff, but there would be an Act 127 cliff that uh Rutland Town's going to have to just kind of navigate and just think about, so.
Mm-hmm, so he had said in five years, this 16, this will be an increase to whatever else is on our budget, 16%.
So then I I would like to table this till next time, but still get those numbers. We can still discuss it further, but at next visit and we can decide if we want to put it on then or not. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Moving on to the property land discussion and I believe that this is also going to be postponed to next.
Well, this is an update, so I had reached out to a couple of different appraisal services and we found that obviously with the the large tract of land that Rutland Town owns, which abuts Northwoods Park, um that we had to go to a commercial real estate appraisal services. So I was able to uh get ahold of Sergeant's Real Estate Appraisal out of Rutland and they will be out here tomorrow morning at 8:30 to do the appraisal. So as soon as we have those numbers, we'll share that uh with the board, so. But it's, I I actually was very happy that we were able to get uh someone out in that quick amount of time. It's just everything's been pushed back and so we will have numbers for January. But as soon as we we get the report, I'll share with the board, you know, as well, but we can discuss that number publicly as well.
Kelly and I will be walking outside with the appraiser.
I'll be there as well, just keep an eye on these guys because Sarah might, you know, try to muscle on.
What time are they coming?
Eight, uh they're here at 8:30, so, yeah.
Thank you, Chris, for doing that, because that was, you know, so to get anybody out to appraise is pretty difficult right now, so that was a quick turnaround, so.
Um is that something that the board members are welcome to attend as well or not?
Yeah, I mean, be honest to me, at first there is, and no one needs to be there, so I I they might get a little, also if there's a whole group of us following this individual around, so it just might look a little awkward.
It's like, well, I want to go.
So I would say if, if, you know, if a, you know, if a board ever wanted to be there, that's fine, but I think one of us then step back. So if Tina, if you felt you want to be there, then I would step back and let you go and and let, you know, Sarah go.
No, I feel like it's important for you to.
But it, I was just there out of curiosity to see this land that Rutland Town owns, uh it's, so that's just where the exact, yeah, right. I mean, I've driven up that drive, but just, I know it's on the right, but just how far back it goes. Uh so but if Tina, if you really want to be there, that's fine, I I could step back and so that's not a problem for me.
Sorry. I'll walk my dog instead. All right, moving on to lifetime.
Should walk him up there.
Lifetime sports.
Of course.
Um so I don't know if Colin would, who's not quite here yet, um or Sour wants to kind of give us an update, um because Abby's not here.
On lifetime sports?
Yes.
Sure, um so thanks to Colin and um Abby Bennett and is Colin back on?
Colin, is that you? Okay.
Oh, do you want to talk about lifetime sports, Sarah, want to update Colin? Or would you? Okay.
Give me five minutes till I get there.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So how about we jump ahead to the consent agenda because Louis is also not here?
Louis just said, he said it'd be uh 10 more minutes, concert's almost done.
Okay, um or new business, I guess we could move to, go to a new business. So town meeting, the informational meeting date, it looks like on the warning, it said January 23rd, is that correct or accurate?
That Christine has checked in, that's that's accurate date that she's received, so.
So, so what's that?
I think on the warning, it said January 23rd.
For?
The pre-town.
Pre-town.
Pre-town at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
And we go second, as far as I know. We, at least last year, we went first, so.
We'll be going second, yes.
Okay.
And the, I just had put this in there and this is something for all of the local boards, uh that there may be a need for a carousel meeting in order to just, you know, approve budgets, approve a warning. We have until January, well, January 20th is the first date that we can publicly warn or warning. But we may find that depending on when the January meeting day is at, that there might be a few things we want to take a look at or just approve. So if that's, there's a need, we we can schedule a carousel meeting where the, you know, board will approve and then we can uh sign the warning in person and then the next uh next day or two, whenever we we can warn that out. So if there's no need for a carousel, then we won't have one. So it's more just, you know, we have that option if if needed. In some past years, we have had to do that, other years, we haven't had to do it. So it just depends on what happens on January meeting, okay? And that's also the collection of warnings, just if we have that carousel, it's fine, but if not, then I mean, Rutland Town is one of the boards that the boards traditionally all here in person, so it's easy to collect signatures. Other boards, it's a little more difficult, but I think that's just something which, just talk to the board about what's the best way that you'd like us to collect the signatures. We don't need every signature on the warning, uh we just need a quorum, but it always looks best when all board members have signed.
So um if if we're not able to do it at a meeting, which we probably won't.
Well, it it, like I said, depends if we, if the January meeting, if, say, by some miracle.
We don't have the numbers right now, so we we know we won't be ready for that meeting.
Correct, so if if a carousel meeting, if we have a quick meeting to approve the numbers, we can actually print off a copy. We would hold that in-person meeting, say, at the central office and we could just print off a copy and just have people sign. Or if we have to have it, say, remotely, we could bring it here to the to the school and have people stop by and uh sign it, so.
Or the, or the clerk's office? Or it has to be signed here to give to the clerk's office?
We we can sign it, we can sign it wherever we want.
So that's what I was going to ask, what everyone preferred, if we had a vote.
Yeah, however you want to do it.
So we're most likely going to have to sign this outside of a meeting. So do we prefer to go to central office, this office, or the town clerk's office?
I'd rather come here.
Yeah.
Come here. Colin, are you okay with that?
Yeah, come here.
To the Rutland Town School Office?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we could do that, that would be great.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, um so now we're going to skip finance because Louis is not here and we'll go to director's orders. I would need a motion to approve the director's orders.
Make a motion to approve the director's orders.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Um approval of the minutes from November 14th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 One door not open.
Middle one, try the middle one.
The middle one?
I'll go open it for you. You got it, Ms. Norin?
Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so I'll I'll be real quick, because I know we have a lengthy discussion with budget tonight. Majority of our work at this time of year is around budgeting and preparing for town meeting. Uh at the SU board meeting, I did give a lengthy update or strategy plan. Uh I have uploaded a copy of that slide, uh the slide presentation into the shared resources folder, uh if you take a look at. And if anyone else would like to look at it, we have uploaded the GRCSU meeting minutes. So just would, you know, encourage anyone who would like to view that update, you can, you know, reach out to Christine McGinnis. We make the video available for you, uh there are copies of the minutes. I think Shawna Chamberlain does a very nice job of capturing, uh you know, what what occurs in the meeting. But yeah, so there are many different ways you can review that updates uh through there as well. In the board packets, also as we discussed, there was a draft of the warning that was placed in there. For obviously, the numbers are not in there, it really is more for the board's review and just check the language and and the if they're satisfied with how it looks and the appearance, then we can move forward, just, you know, plug it in numbers, you know. But if there are any changes that need to be made, just let us know and we'll make those changes because, you know, based on how the board wants that. Also, in the, in your shared resource folder, should be the pretty lengthy um FAQs around Act 127. As we did kind of allude to, and I'll let Louis talk a little bit more about this, Act 127 will have, uh will be impacting districts differently this year, particularly as we, you know, shift in the way that we weight pupils and there are some who are advantaged by this, others who are disadvantaged by this. And as for Rutland Town, um as we anticipated, has, you know, been disadvantaged by this and and we'll have to discuss how we navigate budgeting moving forward and, you know, and how we could be a little more intentional with uh how to navigate so we don't have this this cliff that's kind of looming over us. But there's a lot of good FAQs, a lot of good questions and answers in the FAQ for you to take a look at. And that's something which, um you know, Louis and I want, if there are more questions in January, we can come and have a lengthier presentation to the board around Act 127, not just for this year, but moving forward and uh what that may look like, what the impact, so. So uh, are there any other questions? My page.
Thank you. All right, let's move back up to lifetime sports.
Me?
That would be you.
Well, through the hard work of this board, um the administration, the teachers, the staff, um some union discussions, we're we're able to uh get everything off the ground and uh we're looking forward to having five sessions of lifetime sports next, um starting in the 2024 winter season. So yeah, it's really good, a lot of hard work from a lot of our teachers, Mr. Schneider in in particular organizing, we're going to get rosters out. Unfortunately, on the ski program part, as far as the 50 slots, we were, we started from eighth grade down, so we were, we had to do a random draw for the third graders because that was kind of our overflow. And then for for those that need beginning lessons from second to first to kindergarten, um we were unable to to do that this year. However, there's going to be parental volunteers up there for kids that can ski, um so we're able to pretty much, most kids will get their first choice. Um and as we cycle through the the coming years and hopefully we can build in the budget, um every kid will have their opportunity. Uh we just had to, had to start somewhere, so we decided to go from from the top down this year. But we have a lot of parents that are out there getting fingerprinted so they can volunteer. Um we've organized the blessing, uh it's probably going to be a bit messy this year, um but everyone is really excited and uh we'll report back after our first session.
So you're able to figure out?
Yeah, we are, yep. Chris was helpful and our union members were very helpful. Keith Schneider especially has put in a ton of work, thanks to Colin and Abby. There's been some late night meetings and Mr. Lamar may be lacing up some boots.
Apparently, ski boots don't tie.
Mr. Lamar is like, I don't know anything about lifetime sports, he's like, but I can lace up boots. And we're like, well, first of all, ski boots don't lace, but hockey skis do. A little nervous about all this. So hopefully at some point, maybe not this year, uh Mr. Lamar can can hit the slopes, we'll see, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for the time you all put in and Abby as well.
Yeah, we do appreciate the staff and the teachers. I think there was a lot of confusion and just the process from the board perspective of us passing it and getting things done behind the scenes that we're having a um, I'll be at the teachers' after-school meeting tomorrow to answer their questions for their involvement. So I think a lot of them were in the dark as far as what what's going on as we were just kind of getting things as fast as we could put together. So we're going to have a nice meeting with them to get everyone on the same page and coordination with the parentals and the professionals in in the facilities we're going to use. So that way, all the teachers are a little bit more at ease as far as what's expected of them as far as, uh, you know, not dragging kids up the mountain and being responsible for teaching skiing. So we'll have a nice meeting with them tomorrow.
And um just so that public knows, it's um five Thursdays.
Yes.
Afternoons.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, starting in January.
Correct, yes. And this information, there's a letter drafted that I think Mr. Schneider and have been working on even now. So we hope to share that with our teachers tomorrow and then um later in the day, hopefully with uh families. So we know it's a really quick turnaround, but we've just, we've had very little time to do this and um so I'm grateful that Colin and Abby are going to come talk at our faculty meeting tomorrow, just so everybody's aware of that.
Yeah, some of the, some of the parents have already been communicated with via skiing for the third, second, first and kindergarten, um but we're going to get everything else to everybody. There's some waiver timelines on the ski stuff, but we're going to be in close communication with those parents to make sure that we have a turnaround there. As well as if if kids need extra gear, all that stuff, we'll be working pretty in tandem. But for everyone's knowledge, it'll be the 11th, the 18th, the 25th, the first and the 8th. And we'll have a little bit of a varying bus departure schedule for Pyco starting first and it's, it'll all be in the letter. But hopefully, reference on there is my email address for the public. I'll kind of be the point person to take communication if everyone's angry, sad, happy, whatever it is, I'm here to help spearhead that um to alleviate, our our admin and our teachers have lots to do with the the school year, so anything we could do to take the pressure off that. If people have questions, I'm sure there's a lot, um that's what we're here for.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks for all that work.
And thank you to Pyco, thanks to Mountain Top, thanks to Georgetty, Rutland Recreation, the Bowlarama for for accommodating us. Again, it seemed like a long time, but we we saw it pretty short notice. Hopefully, we can build out the schedule a little bit in like the spring next year, um but. we can build out the schedule a little bit in like the spring next year, but all these sites have been very accommodating to us to, to work with that.
Great, thank you. All right, moving back down to principal's report.
Sure, we'll talk a little bit about your, some of the stuff you're doing too.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I'll skip through just a few things because Mr., because Mr. Lamar will talk a little bit about the HHB things, so parent conferences, those were rescheduled, we had great participation rates, which I'm thankful that we were able to reschedule those, so 96% for pre-K4, 94 for 5 through 8, which is our student-led conferences, and those, all of our, or pardon me, 5th through 8th graders that do student-led conferences, it's a requirement that they present their learning, so if they weren't able to come with a parent, then they do that with Ms. Daley, so they'll all, it'll be 100% shortly. We talked a little bit about this, and I'll circle back after my principal's report about we've seen an increase in hazing harassment and bullying this year in particular, and mostly, I would say, harassment, up until, I think, from our last meeting. So Mr. Lamar will talk about that a little bit, but he's been doing a great job at, you know, not only restorative practices with those that are involved, but also being more proactive. There's some information on here, some fun things that's happening in library with Mr. Bertoloni in regards to, to robots and coding and all sorts of stuff, all the way down to the littles, which has been fun to see. Thanks to Sue Canal, we've really been looking for more structured professional development in writing, we've done a lot of focus on reading, so this really aligns with our literacy work that we've done the last few years, so all of our K4 teachers have signed up to take this PD, I've linked it right here if you want to take a peek. I will be attending with K2, and then Mr. Lamar is going to attend with our 3rd and 4th grade teachers, which is great. Officer Angie is going to take 10 Rattlin Town students this, tomorrow, for Shop With the Cops, we're really excited about that, we've had a significant increase in student needs due to our changing population, so she has a lot of kids that she's going to be bringing to help with the holidays on essentials. Some structures that are here are character assemblies, TA ambassadors in 7th and 8th grade that are doing some service learning and adopting some families in need. Thursday, 8th graders are going to take an aptitude test with Cindy Donegan from the Stafford Tech Center, so, and then the 8th graders will then go visit Stafford programs later in the spring. A shout out to Jody Manning, who's here visiting us tonight, and for bringing her dog Breezy in, who is a therapy dog in training, and today's Breezy's birthday, so. That's just been wonderful, and we did our strategic plan meetings as well, those students that attended the strategic plan meetings at West Rutland, all of them had brought up stress that is put on from sports, academics, family life, and they had mentioned the therapy dogs that had visited prior to COVID in elementary classrooms, and they had all said, any chance they can come, a therapy dog can come when we take, at the times, our MAPS test, or other times where things get really stressful, so thank you to Mrs. Manning for bringing Breezy, it's just been wonderful for everyone. EST, so FastBridge, we'll have, Mike had put in here, another data review meeting after we do our second round of FastBridge testing, we'll also touch based on Sabers after we talk a little bit about the School Connect. Physical plan, I won't read all of this, but as you heard, we have some promethium boards, the ice rink install is happening, we were hoping to get it filled with water prior to the snow. Information about Patrick Griffin that we talked a little bit about for the stormwater, Kelly's been doing some work on trails, we reviewed the affiliate, uh, facilities assessment with superintendent, and just a lot of fun things happening that I, I won't read through all of these, but concerts, the Rattlin Town seniors are coming on Friday, Chris is going to come in as well, and our jazz band will perform for them in the cafeteria, Heritage Family Credit Union's coming the first of the year to thank us for all of the food that we raised, for the community cupboards, et cetera, for Stuff-A-Bus. Yeah, a lot of fun things happening. As I say, Mike laughs every time he sees this report because I continue saying the same thing, we continue to be short-staffed, primarily with substitutes, but we continue to look for a special educator that's been open all year, and we're still looking for a first-grade, long-term substitute, and any other subs that I, as I had mentioned. And then I listed the enrollment there. So I think, if Mike, if you want to talk a little bit about School Connect, I know we mentioned it last time, but it was a late meeting, and then we can go over our Sabers data as well.
Definitely, so yes, we have had an increase in HHBs, particularly harassment, we've had some bullying cases as well, and it's, it was an uptick this year, and I, I hesitate to say that it's calmed down lately, as far as the cases come up, I know, now I'm gonna, I'm like knocking on wood. But I think part of that, we used the School Connect resource that was sent to us by another school, so we looked into it and they had a sample lesson, and that's what we took and went around to TAs with, and it was about advocacy, like different ways that you can advocate for somebody if they're in a situation where maybe they're being like picked on, or like people are gossiping, things like that. So we used that sample lesson, and it was really successful, so I reached out to School Connect to see if they have more sample lessons, or if they, if like, what might the cost be of us using some more of their resources, and unfortunately I haven't gotten back, I've called them several times and they haven't gotten back to me, so I'm not sure, maybe they're blocked up, maybe it's taken off and they're just busy, but it's definitely a resource that we liked using, and it seemed the lessons were really successful, so we took them and used them, hoping we can use more, they're kind of, you can, if you click on that link, you'll see they're like locked out unless you get, can sign in, and I'm assuming there's some kind of cost or subscription with signing in. So that's what I reached out about, and hopefully we'll get that. And then we're going to go back around, so whether we get that or not, we're going to go back around to different TAs in January when we return from break. We know that a common theme also that comes up in middle school is gossiping and rumors, so we want to tie that into those lessons as well, and I know School Connect has some things on that, so that's why I was really hoping we could use that, but if not, that's okay, we can kind of, we'll, we'll make it work and, and come up with some things, but yeah, so it's kind of the update there.
And then Sabers?
Yes, this would, do you mind presenting this again, it's in the principal's report? Or do you, or can you just look at that document yourselves, or do you want?
I can look at it myself.
You can look at it? Okay.
I think it's in the packets.
So it's in the principal's report?
There's only two slides.
Yep, only two slides, and we did share this at the last meeting, but I think it was just a packed meeting, we also went over FastBridge data, I believe, so.
Unfortunately, Abby was really looking forward to this, and she's not here today.
Yeah, so every time that this is administered, teachers then have a PLC time where they meet and, and review this data, and then they send students that may be of concern or flagged to our counselors, so that goes to Kate and Tracy and Liz, and Liz Yado, our behavior specialist, and then Mike has a follow-up meeting, well, he's just started, so he'll have a follow-up meeting with them to just discuss students, and the good news is, is that typically there's no surprise to those students that are flagged.
So they reach out to the ones that are in 15%?
Correct.
On the first side?
Yeah, or there may also be students that are not flagged that they may say, I have a concern since this test was administered.
And then it said that grades 2 through 8, the students assess themselves. Is that 100% participation?
That is the goal, yes.
Was it, or do you know?
I think so, because we went back and there was a grade that missed it, so.
Yeah, and we checked on that, the only exceptions would be if a student can't take the assessment on the computer, or if we have new students too, so like one started a few weeks ago, wouldn't have taken it at that time, so those would be the exceptions.
And what would be some examples of questions that were asked on it, if you don't mind?
I don't have those at my fingertips right now.
Yeah, I'd have to pull it up.
Oh, Mrs. Norin, do you mind, Ms. Norin shares?
It's, do you, how do you feel you handle situations? How do you feel you handle when you're upset with things? Do you like school? There's some of the other ones, there's like a sport question, I think, it's just, it's basically like a self-reflection of the kids, and at our level too, some of the data is a little skewed because some of the kids, you know, they're like, oh, I'm doing great, oh, I'm great, and you're like, so, you know, so you.
Could vary by the time of the day.
Exactly.
Yes.
So.
Sometimes I gotta fight with my mom and I'm not in a good place.
The recess wasn't good, so.
What are you doing, are you feeling, feeling sad, things like that, so.
And how often is this given? And thank you for that.
Three times a year.
Three times?
Yeah.
And this is one time so far?
That's that, in January we'll do another round.
And then the second slide? Or I guess it's the third?
So that one's when the teachers assess the students.
And that was significantly higher, it looked like. Why do you think that there's a difference?
I think sometimes, especially for the younger kids, they may know their current life circumstance are, just as Mrs. Norin had explained, everything's great, everything's great, and, and maybe at that time, or that's great that that's their perception at that moment. And I am hesitant sharing this, just because if you get into grade, it can really self-identify kids, so that's why it's very basic that we just left this for two slides.
So it looks like kids were lower, though, so it wouldn't be the teacher not knowing, I mean, it would be more the teacher not knowing what's going on with them, right? The teacher thinking that things are better than maybe they are?
Oh, yeah. Yep. It would be the other way around, correct?
Or, or a student having a rough day, and so it's not, so the teacher sees them, you know, every day and has one idea, and the, maybe just specifically that, at that point, the student felt like they weren't as happy. So either way it could be.
Correct, I flip-flopped it.
Does anyone have any other questions on that?
No, I mean, it's interesting to me. Doesn't have to get into a long-winded conversation, but I, just out of curiosity, like, is there embedded like coping sort of strategies that teachers use, not, not necessarily for a kid that is struggling, but just to try to keep them even, you know?
Yeah, I think each classroom is different, and each, you know, we each have, taking responsive classroom and different trainings, the idea of having a calm space, and I think every classroom has what they call a calm space, where the kids can decide, or you can ask them, we all have, you know, different things they have in their desk to kind of self-regulate, and talk about, you know, deep breathing, mindfulness, different things they can do on their own or as a whole group to.
And does that carry through to middle school, or is that expect?
Yeah, well, especially with TAs in middle school, that's the point of TA, is to have those small groups, you can touch base with all the students and get to know them. We go outside a lot, too, and that is really refreshing, we're so lucky at this school to have that environment where you can. And I don't know if it was mentioned, but the, we, the teachers sat with the guidance and the other support people at our school, and went through each one of the tests to see what do those students that have significant needs, do they have like that important person they can turn to, and the guidance people get involved.
And at our level too, one more thing I just thought of, there's a question at our level about how do you feel you relate to your peers, well, 2nd graders are like, what's a peer? So we know the first time we took the Sabers, we were like, oh, okay, so we should probably preset some of the vocabulary, what's a peer, so we know that now before they take it, we kind of, you know, teach that, a peer is a friend, someone you, you may sit with, someone you class, and so things like that, helpful.
Thank you. Um, I, you know, as you were, just to go back to a different part of your report, Sarah, you said that Mike was almost laughing at you because your challenges and resource requests are pretty much the same. So I was just wondering if we could spend a couple minutes just brainstorming or thinking about, like, when you say resource request, what, what are some things that we as a board can do to help you find substitutes, a special educator, a long-term first-grade substitute? What are some things that we could do for that, or that you don't have that you wish you did?
I think it's a shortage of workforce. And I think that there is competitive pay in other areas that makes it challenging. It's finding people that want to work. And competitive pay, but you know, a lot of people want to be here because this is a great place to work.
We don't have a lot of turnover, which is really nice.
With our teaching staff, correct.
Oh, not that I have any data to back it up, but what, what are the retired teachers capped at?
So the retired teachers this year, again, the Agency of Education has waived, right? They still waived this year that they, it doesn't count against their retirement because we're in such a shortage of teachers, so.
Sounds like they're ahead of me then, that's fun.
Yeah, so they've said this isn't going to count against you for retirement, I know it was last year, I'm pretty sure it's the same this year too, because I've talked, yeah, so if there are retired teachers, it's not going to count against them to, to be here, which is great. And for these positions, I mean, I've contacted every, you know, obviously university and all my connections and social media, signs out front, and.
And when you're looking for a long-term sub versus a regular substitute, what are the absolute necessities for that position versus a regular substitute?
They have to be a licensed teacher in that subject area.
And is there any provisional allowed in that realm?
Yes, there could be.
In order to qualify for provisional, you have to.
Have a four-year degree.
Right, and then also go before the state and have a plan for licensure, so it's been a plan, they're not going to just give you a provisional without a plan, so that's, and that is a deterrent for some.
Right, and you can only be on a provisional for two years.
And so what would happen if we don't have anyone come forward or out of the woodwork for that long-term first-grade position? What, what would it look like?
I have a couple of ideas, but I, I have a couple of ideas.
So you have a backup plan?
But the goal is to find a highly qualified teacher for our long-term sub openings that's licensed.
And where are you advertising, so right now?
School spring and Indeed.
Have we tried the paper?
I have before for our custodian positions, and I haven't gotten anybody, but I did get one candidate from the sign-out front.
I see, the reason I ask about the paper is I do see other school districts advertising for different positions, so I was just curious.
I did that, it was, it was pretty expensive for custodians, and when I never, it was, I think all last year, I kept asking Pam to put it in the paper, and maybe I could try it for a teaching position, I'm not sure.
So anyone have any other thoughts or ideas?
I mean, I think it's anyone you talk to, where it's.
It's not just our school, I'm just.
Right, I mean, I went, there was, coming right off of Killington, there were two gas stations closed that said, no staff. You know, I mean, it's, it's everywhere we go, so.
Well, I'm glad you have a backup plan, but hopefully you won't have to use it, and.
Maybe it's June 1st grade. You're looking. And Chris is driving a bus. And Mike will be lacing up ski boots.
I'd sub if I could, but it's against the law, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Think you can drive for Bacha, though.
I don't think he has all the job.
What about another country? Can you advertise in another country?
Yeah, they have to be on a, we, we have had people applying for visas that have applied for positions before.
Well, hopefully someone will drop in, so thank you. All right.
The team, I just want to add, the, the problem also is, people that are living here, they, they know where the jobs are at, but we're having a real difficult time attracting people from, to this region just because of housing as well. I mean, that, we've had a lot of individuals who've expressed interest each year, and then, but there's just no place to live or affordable, I think that's a huge deterrent, and we've, we've shared that information with, you know, representatives, with senators, that, you know, just for workforce in general, it's just, you know, there's a housing crisis here, that it's just a reality of. that, you know, just for workforce in general, it's just, you know, there's a housing crisis here that it's just a reality of where we live in. So there are a lot of factors that are playing into, into this. And I know, you know, I sat in a superintendent's meeting, regional superintendents where we're all scratching our heads and, you know, I, I think because there just aren't out there. And I think in the high needs positions, and we saw this 10 years ago and with, you know, around math and science and special educators, it's just, it's, it's not attractive. And I'll also be honest, when, when people, you know, look at social media or they look at, you know, newspapers and they hear, you know, teachers being berated or, you know, or just put down for all the work, it's not a very attractive workforce and it's, you know, there are people that are in this, they really truly love kids. But for a lot of individuals who want, maybe think about it in the profession, some of them are just are being, you know, it's a deterrent because they just, why would I want to enter that for, for, you know, what, what low pay and to get beat up by, you know, community members and just, it's a thankless profession. I think it just, you know, I go back to lifetime sports, the fact of what, you know, I mean, that's a huge lift to, not just, I mean, to have a whole school operating, I think that, you know, and, and Colin, there was some frustration, just understand that there's a lot of red tape in education. Things don't move as quickly in that field of education as in other, other professions and other careers and, you know, but the fact that, you know, the, the staff here and, you know, the administration, we're able to make this work, but that's what you find is we, the staff are very, they're selfless. And, uh, but that's what we're seeing though, is we have a lot of individuals who are leaving the workforce because they're frustrated, they're tired, they feel the work, they see more things being piled on during each legislative session. Uh, they ask to do more, it just, it's, it's, it's very difficult. So when we ask, what can we do? There's just a lot that goes out beyond this room of education. I think this is across the nation, it's not just here in state of Vermont, I talked to friends in Illinois, back in New Jersey, they're all experiencing the same thing, it's just, it's, we are at a, a very difficult time where um, we, we just have to be very careful about how we proceed, so just.
Thank you.
Does, uh, representatives, do they hear that too?
They do.
I mean, that's what I've been thinking about lately.
I think there are, you know, I'm not going to, in politics, but I think when we look at, there are a lot of infrastructure issues and I think it's just, you know, I sat and I had a, a, one of our, you know, representatives or senators that say, well, we don't have the infrastructure in our community, so we have, but we have schools. And I think that's just kind of the mindset, well, you know, we can just, you know, oh, we have, we have mental health issues, we have social motion, whatever, I can put it on the schools, you know, the schools will fix this, the schools, every, every town or a community has a school and a lot keeps getting piled on and piled on and so, and teachers are looking and say, okay, you know, I want, I want improved academic achievement, we want to get our scores up, we want to have the growth, but I'm, I'm dealing with a lot of other issues right now. We have some kids are coming in from some pretty tough home lives. You know, the fact that this kid got through the day and didn't break down, that's a huge win, but there's just a lot there and, uh, you know, so they hear this, but there, there's just a lot of other issues that have to be unraveled, you know, it, it, it goes back to what you said earlier about, you know, being proactive and forward-thinking. We don't have, we're lacking infrastructure in a lot of our communities to support families, to support communities, and it is falling upon schools uh, to, and I think that's where you're seeing a lot of administrators and staff are just exhausted and tired and, and when we then see Governor Scott messaging around 18% and all because Ed's spending, we just keep wanting more and more, it, it just, it's like, we just keep getting kicked and, and it's like, you know, without really telling the whole story about what really is going on in our, our schools, that the services and things that we're providing are a direct result of pieces of legislation that are being forced down our throats, like, okay, now you need to do this, now you do that, and it's like, sure, but at, at what time? So I think they, they hear it, but I think at the same time is it's just, there's just this disconnect. Now, because I think, like I said, we are propping up communities to a certain extent. And on the backs of a lot of great individuals, our teachers, our administrators and, uh, and like I said, I don't think they get thanked enough for some of the things they do. I think this, this board is very, very gracious, you know, to the teachers about, you know, the things they do and recognizing the, the great efforts. Um, but I think a lot of our, our staff don't feel appreciated in a lot of ways. And I think, you know, so like I said, it's just, it's not a very attractive profession right now. I hate saying that. I love education, I, I come from a family of educators, been in 31 years, but that's just the reality, you know, so.
All right, um, thank you, Chris. Right, moving on, we'll go to personnel quick because that'll be. Um, contract recommendations, we have Cassandra Kozmowski, who apparently started already. As a long-term substitute for Maggie Proza, um, at $231.66 per day. Uh, and then for informational purposes only, Donald Perry and Shannon Perry are both half-time custodians at 1716 and 1765 per hour respectively. And then, um, for, uh, teachers, for stipends for ex-curricular Elizabeth Coghlan, Sean DuBois, both standards board members at $300 stipends, and Keith Schneider and Colby Hescock, both co-coordinators for the Lifetime Sports at $40 per hour with a $15, or 15-hour max. So do I have a motion to accept the professional staff?
Make a motion to approve that?
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to resignations and retirements. Um, resignations, we have John Kerstetter as a custodian effective November 21st. And the retirement of Marilyn Garrow, kindergarten para, effective end of the school year, in 20, of this school year. Um, how long has Marilyn been with Rutlandtown?
I'm not sure, the number of years.
It's been a long time though.
It's been a long time and she said that she would be willing to come back to be a substitute in preschool.
It's been about 25 years.
She's been here as long as I've been here, so, yeah, you would know better.
About 25, I think.
Great, well, we wish her well. Um, and do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, accept.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
There was that retirement request that was shared.
That was from last visit and, uh, and that's going in the executive session, I believe. I have it right here.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Um, vacancies are in your, the online packet or paper packet, if you had it printed out, um, it's for your information only. Um, my chair report is that at the, um, the SU meeting, which the minutes were added at the end of the day today, so you do have them, um, in the bucket if you would like to read over them later. Um, so main conversations we had, one was about cell phones in the school. Back in Sept-, I think it was September, um, a parent came to the West Rutland Library during our meeting and requested that the SU board look at, um, cellphone use in the schools and gave a lot of data and research on how cell phones and really add to anxiety and loss of learning for kids. Um, a- after that meeting, which was either August or September, um, Chris met with the administration of all the schools and, um, we kind of went over what procedures were in place already, um, what procedures could be helpful that weren't in place. And, um, it sounds like, um, at least at, as of our October meeting, that, um, schools have very little problems with cell phones at this point because their procedures, um, really do help to keep the cell phones out of the, um, classroom while learning is taking place. But I do think we're going to get an update in January about that and look further into whether or not we want to um, do more as an SU. So, um, that was one major part. The other major, um, section of the SU meeting was speaking about the strategic plan. Um, the strategic plan, uh, we got an update and we will have another update, I believe, in April. Um, there's a lot of information in the SU minutes as well as online. Um, and it, Chris and his staff and all the principals and teachers are doing a great job of working on the goals of that five-year plan. And so we're six months into it and it looks like it's going swimmingly so far, so we're very happy about that. Um, as a side note, we are looking at updating the SU mission and vision. And I will be leading that committee, um, so, um, the small subcommittee will be meeting in January to discuss what we want to do going forward, as to who, um, what stakeholders we want to be part of the process. Um, and what, how we see it going forward. So if you are interested in helping out with that, um, just keep your eyes and ears open because there will probably be somewhere in February or March, uh, a place for you to help out. Um, and we also completed our superintendent evaluation. And I tried to represent our board well at that, um, and it did take a while, but it is all done now, so it's good. So that is the board report. Now that Louis has joined us, would you like to go now, Louis?
All righty, if you are.
Sure.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, so tonight, let's start first with the announced tuition rate. So each year, we have to announce the tuition that we're going to charge for incoming students that are not residents of Rutlandtown. Um, and so since you operate a K through eight school, you have to announce a elementary rate, which would be your K through six, and then a secondary rate, which would be your seven and eight. Uh, so in the packet, I provided you a, a little information as to what our rates are currently, as well as what some of the schools, surrounding schools' rates are, as well as the state average rate, which is used for independent schools, and what my recommendation would be for this year, which just represents a 3%, approximately a 3% increase. Rutlandtown doesn't typically have a lot of tuition students, I think, um, this year is actually the largest it's been in the last few years. I believe you have five currently.
I thought it was seven.
Yeah, I think we, it was in my principal's report that I just closed out.
Okay, that's even better.
I think there's, I think there's seven. I've worked really hard, I just don't want any more seventh grade, but all others are welcome. And I have three seventh grade tuition students.
So, so this would gen- generates revenue, which goes to obviously your educational spending. So currently, your, your rate is 15.5 for elementary, my recommendation is increasing it to 16.5. Uh, and for secondary, your current rate is 17 and my recommendation was 17.5. If you, if you like those rates, we can, we can go with those, definitely you can go with different rates. It doesn't have huge impact, we're not talking about a lot of students, but it, it, a little bit here and there, so. If, if you want them to go higher on, on the secondary rate, we, we can do that. Your secondary just represents seven to eight, so it's not high school students, so it's not, uh, secondary goes seven through, through 12, but um, definitely, I guess it gets more expensive probably once you get into the high school. Uh, with more activities and college prep and sports, varsity sports, stuff like that. Higher-end classes. So if, if you're okay with those rates, I would take a motion to approve those, um, otherwise, any suggestions on different rates, I'm open to that as well.
Motion to approve the, uh, new rates?
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, thank you, Colin.
Okay, so moving on to budget. Uh, so last month, we looked at the first draft, um, at that time, our total total expense was up 3.9%. Uh, education spending was up 4.7%. And so if you look at page one of the budget that was presented last month, it included all of the highlights of changes that were included in that budget. Uh, we had a lengthy discussion about, uh, a number of different things, including uh, the different, uh, Act 127 and how that is going to impact our budget and we'll, we'll get to that in a minute, uh, but before we do, I just wanted to go over some of the highlights that are in the second draft. Uh, so currently, the second draft, the expense is up 6.4%. And education spending is up by 7.2%. So it's roughly a, a two and a half percent increase since the last month. And the big things that are making up that increase are, we approved the SU budget and, and that has been calculated into this budget. Uh, and then the big driver, one of the other big drivers is secondary tuition, which is up by approximately $150,000. Uh, that's approximately a 5% increase over last year. And so that's a combination of an increase in an estimated tuition rate uh, as well as a slight increase in students. And, and these are just estimates because we don't know what students are going to be here next year. What we do is we take the students that are there now, uh, we move everybody up a grade. Uh, we take your eighth grade class that's in Rutlandtown, we move them up a grade. Um, and just use our estimates of students based on the students that we know about today. For tuition rates, we are just estimating 3%. Uh, it's typically what we've done and where most schools sort of come out, some a little higher, some a little lower, uh, with the exception of, uh, the last few years, um, definitely Rutland, uh, Rutland City's tuition increases, who's one of your, uh, biggest tuition student recipients, um, had, had 14% one year and 10% and that definitely was a, a budget driver. I've inquired with Rutland City where they think their tuition rate is going to be for next year. Um, they're not at liberty to tell me yet, they have, I believe, a meeting tonight where they were going to be presenting some data to the board. And hopefully should know more information as to what their announced tuition will be for next year, uh, later this week, so we won't have that data, uh, until the next draft in January.
Louis, can you just, um, go over one more time? So if, if a student goes to an independent school, then how much do we pay them? Is it the average of independent schools that you had on that tuition sheet?
Yep, so if you look at that announced tuition sheet, it would be that $18,266. So that's the average rate and it's capped at that.
So Louis, can I, just to clarify, so we have some kids that go to Kimball Union and, as an example, so that amount is sent to Kimball Union and then they cover the rest?
The, the families cover the rest?
Correct, that's what I know.
Um, and then, so what about when a student goes to Rutland City? Is it capped at that $18,000 as well, or do we have to pay them what Rutland City's is?
Uh, so with public school, Vermont Public Schools, uh, they set an announced tuition rate like we did tonight. And so when we looking to pay, we pay whatever their announced tuition rate is. And they can set that at whatever they want, so they can set it at 25, 26, they can set it at 12. We would have to pay that rate. The state has a true-up the following year, which is called the allowable tuition adjustment. So at the end of the year, uh, the school submits all of their data in the staff collection to the state, they submit revenues, expenses, child count, and the state uses that data to collect, to calculate what's called an allowable tuition. If the allowable tuition is more or less than the announced tuition by 3%, then they have, they have to make an, uh, well, if it's, if it's, if the allowable tuition is less than what they announced, they have to give a refund required. As, as long as that difference is more than 3%. If the allowable tuition is more than what they announced, then they have the option to do an allowable tuition adjustment and charge us more, uh, a charge back. The difference that they can, they can't charge the full amount, so if they announced, if they announced 20 and the allowable came in at 25, they can't cha- charge the whole $5,000. They can only charge the difference between 3 and 10%. So 10% is the max and they can only charge everything over the 3% window. So in, it's approximately, so it's 7% of whatever that difference is. Um, the last few years, um, I mean, most of your students go to, to Rutland City and those that don't are going to out-of-state or private schools, which don't have an allowable tuition adjustment. There haven't been allowable tuition adjustments for Rutland City the last two years uh, because they've missed the deadline, but their allowable tuition has been more than their announced tuition. It is again, more than their announced tuition for last year. Uh, so their announced tuition for last year was like, was $19,960, uh, approximately, I don't have that exact number in front of me. But their allowable tuition, so far, it's preliminary numbers, has come in at $24,000. So they can bill us back approximately 7% of that. So it's roughly based, times the number of students you have, another $150,000 for a year that's been done closed. We have until, if they do, we have until July 31st of 2024 to pay it. Which means we could either use this year's funds or we can. Which means we could either use this year's funds, or we can budget it into next year and use next year's funds. I'm, I've been working, I've been speaking with the, the business manager of Rutland City, as well as other business managers, um, to just kind of get a handle as to, one, whether they're going to charge us or not. And two, why is their allowable tuition so high? Again, it is just a preliminary number, so hopefully it comes down. But looking at our allowable tuition numbers for our schools, they're nowhere near twenty-four thousand. We operate more smaller schools. So we're trying to get a better handle on that and determine, again, why, why it's so high and whether there'll be a bill back. So right now, this budget doesn't include anything because we haven't received notification and we don't have final numbers. But that is a potential item that we may have to look at at the next meeting.
And also, just as an aside, if a student goes to a high school in our SU, so Proctor, West Rutland, or Polkney, then, um, do our, do we get charged what their tuition is?
Correct. So Corey Valley announces a tuition, um, those, that's the only one of the high school, but, I mean, Wellspring's also announces a tuition, so I believe it's the same students there. Um, and so you pay whatever their announced tuition is. Corey Valley has not done bill backs. Uh, I, I, I strongly believe that we should announce a tuition. And based on how much we're looking to collect, and if our allowable tuition is different, if it's higher, then we shouldn't have to do a bill back. Definitely if it's a, if it's lower, then we have to do a refund. But that's, I've always been a firm believer of that. Um, we should just announce a tuition that we're comfortable with, um, and, and not look to, the year is done, we shouldn't look to do a bill back adjustment. It, it's really up to each district in the state to make that decision.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to ask while you were on the tuitions.
So the other addition that we talked about at the last meeting was the lifetime courts, definitely a lot smaller impact. Uh, right now I have the twenty-five thousand there as a placeholder. So those are the, the three main changes that are in this budget. So again, that's resulting in a total expense of six point four percent and spending up seven point two percent. Ed spending is the amount you pay for property taxes. So if you go to page it's six of it, it's the last page, the tax rate calculation. I will go through the, the tax rate calculation and how it impacts the, the average taxpayer. Uh, before I go into this, so I, I'll just talk a little bit about Act one twenty-seven. Uh, so I talked about it last month, and, and since then, there has been some more information that has come out, uh, from the state. Uh, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to read it. There was an FAQs that was sent out. And there's a lot of information in, in, in the news. Uh, there was the December first Tax Commissioner's letter. There was, um, also some information on the news regarding that. So before Act one twenty-seven, we were, um, taxing based on Act, Act sixty-eight. Uh, Act sixty-eight, um, equalized taxes based on what we call the equalized pupil. And so equal, so equalized pupil took the average daily membership of a number of students in your school during a thirty-day window at the beginning of the school year. And it then weighted that data, uh, based on the level of instruction of each of those students. So an elementary student was based on, uh, had a weight of one, secondary students had a weight of one point one-three, and pre-K had a weight of point four-six. For the most part, that was the extent of, of the weighting that was part of that whole calculation. So it, it took that data, it took the two-year average, and spit out an equalized pupil number. So based on that data, the last year of Rutland Town had an equalized pupil number of five hundred and twenty-six. So that closely represents how many pupils you have in your, in your district, pre-K through twelve. I mean, there's a little weighting in there, so it's not an exact number. Act one twenty-seven threw that out the window and it recalculated how we're counting pupils. And it put a lot more emphasis on poverty. ELL, which is English Language Learners, um, population density, and it's weighting based on all, uh, small schools. And it's weighting based on all of these, um, characteristics. Poverty being the biggest one. So any school who was, um, so before, poverty didn't really have a big, big part in the whole calculation. So any school who was in a low poverty area is extremely disadvantaged by Act one twenty-seven. And those who were in a high poverty area are extremely advantaged by Act one twenty-seven. Being that Rutland Town is on the lower end poverty-wise, you're seeing the biggest impact in our issue and, and one of the biggest impacts in the state as far as Act one twenty-seven. Because the state knew that Act one twenty-seven was going to cause, um, big changes to districts and how the ta- tax rate is calculated. And there was going to be districts that were extremely disadvantaged, and then there was going to be some that was extremely advantaged. Uh, they put a five-year window on implementation to slowly implement the, the full effects of the act. Uh, so you have five years where you have the max, the maximum amount your tax rate could increase is five percent. As long as the district does not spend more than ten percent, have more than a ten percent increase in their education spending per pupil in any year. So when we look at what your tax rate calculation is, I calculated it based on if that threshold was not in place, and then I also calculated with that threshold in place. So again, so that threshold, that five percent cap is in place for the next five years through FY twenty-nine. And then in FY thirty, um, that cap goes away. And whatever the tax rate gets calculated at, that's what the tax rate will be, of course, unless there's a statute change. So whatever we do this year and for the next three years, we're, we're not eliminating that difference. We're just moving it to future years. So eventually, we're going to have to tackle that increase. And so our goal for the next four years, as we're presenting budgets and working with our communities, is to, to, and, and working with that, with our school, is to, one, either make changes to reduce costs so that, that full tax rate impact is not going to hit the taxpayers. Or to communicate with the community as to the changes that they'll be seeing in their tax bills when these threshold caps are gone. So we have some time to do that, um, and it's, so it's, I think it's important that we start getting that word out, um, this year. So looking at the actual tax rate calculation, uh, so if you look at the top chart, uh, I listed our total expense at the ten million five hundred seventy-one thousand, which is the six point six, six point three-six percent increase. Our education spending at ten million two hundred ninety-one thousand, seven point one seven percent increase. So then the next, the next line, the long-term weighted ADM, this is the term that's replacing equalized pupils. So as you can see, the number there is actually increased over last year. And, and the reason for that is by doing all this additional weighting, everybody's, everybody's number, the new long-term weighted ADM, is higher. Because now we're weighting everybody based on poverty, based on population density. And because we have now so many more, I mean, pupils in quotes, um, because they, they don't actually represent students, but because we have these long, this ADM number so much larger, the state has to use a different, um, dividing factor. So because they, the state only has one pot of money. And so just because the pupil number is higher, the pot is not also higher. So that impacts the yield. Uh, the yield is the number that the Tax Commissioner recommends each year, and it's the December first letter. And the legislators approve that each year. Usually it's one of their last bills. Uh, it's usually approved in April or May. Um, and it's two lines down. So long-term weighted ADM is at seven sixty. So you take your education spending divided by the seven sixty and spending per long-term weighted ADM, uh, which is now thirteen five thirty-nine. And you divide it by the new property yield of nine thousand four fifty-two to get your equalized tax rate. So based on that calculation, your equalized tax rate is increasing by twenty-one point five three percent. A majority of that is, um, it's roughly about eighteen percent is due to the change with Act one twenty-seven. The rest is due to the change in your educational spending. So then I, I've listed equalized tax rate actuals, which would be a dollar twenty-three, one point two-three-seven-six. And that represents that five percent, uh, cap. And then you divide that by your CLA and to get an adjusted tax rate. So a few other things I'd like to know, and then we'll open up the questions, the comments. So CLA, I'm using last year's. We don't have that number yet. Uh, CLA is the difference between the fair market value of your homes with the assessed value of your home. When that's a hundred percent, those two numbers are equal. Over the last few years, with the housing market really booming, we've seen CLAs drop significantly to, um, low eighties and, and some high seventies, just because your houses are under assessed. Uh, we do know that the, the housing market has slowed nationwide, so we're hoping that that CLA number doesn't continue to drop. That they either stay steady or increases. Uh, so if the CLA increases, that would lower your tax rate. If the CLA further decreases, then it would increase your tax rate. The other number that is still pending is the property yield. At this point, that's just a recommendation from the Tax Commissioner. We won't know the actual number until, like I said, April, May timeframe. The, if you read the Tax Commissioner's letter, uh, this is based on the assumptions. Uh, the biggest assumption is that this is based on a twelve percent increase in educational spending statewide. I, my personal opinion is I, I believe that is a high estimate. None of our districts in our SU are anywhere near twelve percent. If you look at yours, you're up seven point one seven percent. Corey Valley's was up, um, at the end of the last meeting, around eight percent. Uh, the board has asked them to drop that. Ira is down, and Wellspring's is up. Uh, I think it was roughly, um, just around five percent or so. But so, so I, I think that twelve percent estimate is high. And so what that would, if that estimate is high, that should drive the property yield higher, which would help lower tax rates. Now that wouldn't have an impact on you because you've already exceeded that cap. So really, any changes that you make in your budget today or next meeting, or any changes in the property yield won't impact you because you're at that twenty-one percent. And the only thing it'll do is it'll drop that twenty-one percent down to any, any number that, as much as you may cut for. But it will not change that five percent. The only thing that will impact your tax rate, other than to lower that five percent or higher than that five percent, is the CLA. The other number that's still pending is the long-term weighted ADM. That's just based on a preliminary number. Um, I am hoping that that's going to increase a little bit. I've been working closely with, uh, our data manager um, to make sure that we're fully capturing all of our, uh, students who qualify for free reduced lunch. In the past, any of our students, or any of our students that go to your school are captured. Any students that go to another public school are captured by that school that's recording them. But in the past, up until this year, any of the students that go to a private school or out-of-state school, we've never had to capture their, um, eligibility for free reduced lunch. It was never needed. It was never a part of the calculation. So in, in the first round that we submitted to the state, it did not include any of those students that are going to those private schools. So we're working on collecting that data, um, from, from those private schools and out-of-state schools. We're also looking to look to see if those students have any siblings that are in, in Rutland Town school. Because if their sibling, if their siblings in the same household, then we can, um, assign them eligibility based on the same household. So any, any student that we can qualify for free reduced lunch will increase that number. The, the, the bottom chart, um, is just a similar calculation. The only difference is I did it based on if the Act one twenty-seven was in place last year. So they gave, they have, they provided to us what the yield would have been last year, uh, based on if it was in place. And they also gave us what our long-term weighted ADM was last year. Uh, so that's another thing I'd like to point out. So last year, your long-term weighted ADM was six eighty-seven.
No incentive.
And this year it's seven sixty. Quite a significant increase, and, and that is, uh, all based on an increase in your FRL numbers. Uh, there were some changes at the state level, uh, which now is, um, allowing us to count students who qualify for Medicaid, uh, as directly certified, so we can get more students, um, help, um, give them eligibility. And, and, and that increases your free reduced percentage, which helps with grants, helps with this calculation, helps with, uh, many different things as far as funding goes. So I think that's really all the data I want to throw at you at this time. Um, if there's any questions or anything I can help clarify, let me know.
What happens if we go over ten?
So if your education spending per pupil goes over ten percent, you have to go in front of a state review board, determine, to determine whether your increases were justified. And if they determine that they were, then that five percent cap would still stand. If they determine that they were not, uh, then the five percent window goes away, and you're stuck with the total increase. Once you lose the five percent cap, it goes away for the entire, um, until Act one twenty-seven is fully implemented. So you can't get it back.
And that board is not assembled yet, so you don't know.
You know, something like needing space, something like that, not arbitrarily wasting money. Not saying we're going above ten, but.
Um, Louis, could you just, um, say again, out of that twenty-one point five three percent of the equalized tax rate, how much of it was due to the new pupil weighting?
Eighteen.
Eighteen percent.
It was roughly eighteen percent when we were looking at the data last year.
What, uh, Act what, one twenty?
Seven.
What did the vote pass at? Just out of curiosity?
I, I don't know offhand.
How to put you on the spot, nothing to do with the question of Louis. I mean, this.
So Act one twenty-seven was a bill that was years in the making. Um, there was a big study committee. As, was your question, how many people approved it and how many people?
Do you know what the, yeah, I'd like to, I, I can look it up, never mind.
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have that data.
How long was equalized pupil, um, how long was that a, the calculus? Do you know?
Act sixty-eight from like ninety-seven, maybe?
Yeah, it's been a while. I don't know the exact year, but it's been in place for a long time.
Ninety-six or ninety-seven.
Thinking about.
I know I missed, I'm sorry, I missed the second floor update. Um, and I, I'm sure you talked about going out the bond, I know you did last month. Uh, and I know, I know it's a goal of the board, but my opinion based on the financial, just financially finances, I mean, I, I think this is something, information you need to get out into the community before they, before they vote on another large bond. Um, I mean, I think we're talking in excess of three billion, right? Because that's just going to further. Cause that's just gonna further, um, increase this tax rate for, in, for F Y 30. But that's just my, my opinion, my recommendation, it's definitely, it's your decision, but.
My personal opinion is also, oh, and they need to see this to, to know that it's not driven by our spending, what's coming down the pipe. It's an arbitrary number that got made up by a committee, uh, in Montpelier of our peers, uh, equalized pupil to this long-term weighted made up number to skew money where it needs to go. It's not because Rutland Town has been overspending for the last 20 years nor any district nor, I mean, if you take a look, if they had implemented it last year to this year, if Rutland Town raises our education spending 7.17%, which is responsible, our tax rate would have gone down. So it's not local spending that's the problem. We're gonna get whacked no matter what in F Y 30 because they made a change.
We get whacked with every education act that has ever come through. And, you know, I understand what you're saying, Louis, Louis, but, you know, I really think we need to go ahead with the second floor. It's, it's a space that's been empty for 20 some odd years, 25, 30 years. And if we don't get something done about it or try to do something about it, then, then it's never gonna happen, in my opinion.
I do think that, um, I, I think at this point, because we've already kind of gone into the budget quite a bit, um, for next year, I think over the summer or late spring, it would be good to start really diving into the budget and seeing where we can cut to try to start making some preparations with a finance committee or with the whole board. Is there something to?
Well, there's, there's just so many things that are fixed cost.
Right.
And there's just, you know, you look at cutting, cutting the budget and you're cutting the extracurricular stuff away from everybody. You know, these, a majority of these, a school budget is fixed cost across the board, whether supervisory union or local. And it's like, you know, Rutland Town is in a, I, I believe in a unique position, has been ever since I've been here. And it's just very unfortunate that we've had to take these lumps the way we have. And it's just, it's all about the money, money, money. And it's like, we need to do this for ourselves.
At the same time, I don't think the taxpayers are gonna be very happy if, you know, we keep cruising along and not, not prepare for this. And then in five years, there's a 20% increase in taxes. So I, I think we have to also be mindful of that unless there's some other way we can go about this legislatively. I don't know.
There's so many questions that don't relate to this, us specifically, um.
And Colin, I did send you the, the vote. It was 132 yes, 11 no. Six were absent, so.
How's Burlington passing 165 million dollar bond to, to do a new building? Is that under their ed fund or is that coming out of their municipal funds? How, how are they gonna get away? I mean, it blows my mind how, where we, where, where is the pot of money going? But that's neither here nor there. I think it's responsible for us to try to keep under that 10 threshold. To Jeff's point, I think we gotta, we gotta give a number to, to Louis as far as what that estimate is for the second floor, for the remediation. And, you know, by my calculations, which again, were off the notebook, I think it's, it's below two and a half, which keeps us at, I mean, that's cruising by the sun at 9.7, but it's still below the 10. And God forbid, if we had a situation where we needed to, to do a building and go over 10%, um, I wouldn't want to be in front of the appeal board, but if you had to be, that's something I think would be justified to say, hey, we're not erroneously, you know, jacking up teacher wages 20%. We need a building. We need space. We have, we don't, we're, we're turning away the state mandated, you know, pre-K program. We're turning kids away because we don't have the space. So I think we'd be justified in doing that. And it's only gonna cost more money down the road, um, to, to make a building a year or two from now. And again, looking at the equalized numbers from F Y 24 to 25, 7% local spending is not doing the increase. So if we can keep ourselves under 10, and then to Tina's point, going into next year. But, oh, to Jeff's point too, there's a lot out of our control. I mean, 16.5% increase to healthcare, which we have zero control over, zero, um, negotiating power, or you'd even sit in the room with these people to figure out where the money's going. And we're not gonna just arbitrarily cut teachers. We're already at high classroom counts for our, for, for historical status of Rutland Town and for the state where we're, we're asking a lot from these folks. So, um, I'm comfortable if we can keep it under 10. Um, but again, the, the, get to Louis's point, letting the population know, I mean, that bond is gonna have to go out to a separate bill besides the, the budget. So they have the opportunity to make their, make their case and not shut down the entire school budget by saying, we don't think we can afford, um, the building. But, uh, you know, if we can tell them, hey, even by doing this, you know, it's gonna bring us in. Well, I guess it's not gonna be in this year's budget, right? If we don't bond it out till next year?
Correct. The bond, the bond payment, the first bond payment would be in F Y 26. We would probably wanna add some money, um, into this budget to pay for any legal fees or architect fees or, um, uh, the legal fees for the bond.
Okay.
So I, I don't know if we wanted to come up with a number tonight to throw in there for that, if that's something you're definitely moving forward with. Uh, but the, the, the big payment will be into the next budget.
Louis, um, the surplus that we had from last year that we have as a revenue for this budget, um, you had said before that there were a couple options. One, we could put it as a revenue for next year's budget. Or what was the other option? Was it refilling the capital improvement fund and?
Yep, so you have two options. You can use it as revenue, which right now in this budget represents a revenue, or you can put an item on the ballot to, to move that money to a reserve fund. So, and, so right now, the, the full amount's going in as a revenue. If you were to put a portion of that on the ballot, that will impact your, your education spending, um, and, and further increase the budget. So just keep that in mind, but if that's something you wanna do, I can give you those calculations.
Um, and then I had a question for you two. Um, field trips. I know we belabored this at the end of last school year.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to make sure that the board completely understands. So what we have in the budget is just one field trip bus.
Correct.
Per year.
Correct.
So all field trips have to either be raised by the class.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or paid for out of pocket by parents.
Mm-hmm. Um. Do you want me to send, I sent that to you and Abby the last time. Do you want me to send it again?
I, I found it. I don't.
Okay.
It's in the June bucket.
Yep.
Um, so if anybody wanted to refer to that. So I just wanted to make the board aware that that was the case. And then Louis, I, I know you increased the nurses sub, um, from last year because last year we didn't have anything. And this year, um, you put it up to 2,000, I believe. Is that correct? Find my paper.
That is, that is correct.
And why is it not any higher? I guess, I, I, I remember you saying something like, um, that there was some long-term leave last year. So that's why it was higher the last two years, but we've already.
That is, that is correct.
We've already, it's, we've only been in school for a third of the school year and we've already spent a, um, 75% of what you're budgeting. So I was just thinking that maybe it was just a low estimate, in my opinion.
But all of our, all of our subbing estimates are, are just a portion of our liability. I mean, if everyone was to take their leave and all of those leaves would be full, filled, um, we definitely would not have nearly enough funding in the budget to cover those. Um, it, it's sort of just a guestimate based on, uh, previous history and, um, I mean, some lines we underspend, some lines we overspend. I mean, I think as we said last month, I mean, we can increase that line, um, to whatever number you want. Um, and the question is, do you wanna take it out of another line or you just wanna increase that line and, and leave it?
I, I'm okay with leaving it at 2,000 because I do, I hear what you're saying. I just, I think I wanna make a point that we should keep looking at that because it, we have overspent the last two years by quite a bit and that might be something that we need to look at. And then.
Now, pre-K tuition, pre-K tuition's another one of those areas. I mean, two years ago, I think we spent 25,000. Last year, we spent 75,000. I budgeted 75,000 in this budget, but this year our estimate is 96,000, so.
For what?
For preschool.
Pre-K, pre-K tuition. But I mean, so, so some of these numbers, they go up and down, so. I'm sorry, what was the question?
He's just, the sticker shock is amazing.
Spend a hundred grand on pre-K because we can't house them here?
Well.
Well, it's actually cheaper to tuition them to other. We did that, those numbers last year. So universal preschool is you have to provide at least 10 hours of preschool for those children that are eligible.
It's cheaper, but they're not getting, uh, the same education.
They're getting a full day.
They're not getting a full day. We, we pay 10 hours.
I mean.
So that, that represents approximately 26 students, so which, I mean, so for you to serve all of those students, you would probably need another two classrooms, which would cost you about $300,000. So it's about a third of the cost.
Um, I also had a question about the board dues and fees. Have to find the page. Sorry, I'm trying to find the page now.
On page four?
Four. Yes, thank you. Um, so, I'm trying to figure out the supplies and the dues and fees. What's the difference for the board? Like what goes in each?
Supplies are usually like when you're buying a tangible product, so, um, books, like your law books or, um, a, a, any sort of, like you go to Staples and buy any sort of product.
Is that like the papers?
Usually when you're paying a fee, so if you're going to a conference or a subscription, something like that.
So we, um, I was thinking because, so the dues and fees would be like when we go to the conference, which Colin and I both attended this past year. So I was thinking that we should put 750 in the budget and take it from the advertising.
Okay.
I don't know how the board feels about that, but I feel like it's more accurate. And then where would our, um, if we're doing like a teacher social, would that come from supplies?
Yes.
And then I think, um, something else the board, um, I don't know if they want to discuss that, there's no bus for summer still in this budget, which I think you had said was about 10,000, if I remember correctly.
10,000 for bus, yes.
Yep. Is that anything that the board wants to add?
Oh, it's a cherry. I don't know where it was.
Haven't done it? I don't think we need to do it.
Anyone else have any thoughts about the budget? Um, Louis, if we were going to add something for the bond, where would, would we put that? And how much would you recommend?
You're muted.
Thanks, sorry. Um, so we're going to, can you put some in professional services and some in legal services? Uh, I mean, I, I would say maybe 5,000.
Total for both?
Um, probably that would be fine, cause I think most of the architect work is, is, should be done at this point, so. And then any other expenses, this is really all pre-bond. Any, once the bond is, is done, then we can start pulling from the bond amount. But like, we will have to hire an attorney to, to review all the bond paperwork. We need, we need to, um, create specs, um, more, more, have more questions about specs to add to the specs or whatever. So I, I think 5,000 should be plenty.
Does anyone want to add that in just in case? If we choose not to do the bond, then it'll just be an extra 5,000 in there?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, can we add that in?
Yep.
Okay, any other thoughts on the budget?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that's probably gonna bring us up to like 7.3-ish, maybe? I mean, I'd be in favor of taking some of the surplus and banking it in the capital reserves, bring us up to like eight and a half. Whatever that number is, maybe 70, 80 grand of our surplus and putting it in the capital reserves.
What would be the reason to put that amount?
Well, I'd be cautiously keeping ourselves under that, that 10 number, but also thinking about, you know, so basically we have a five-year window where, where, where we have a cap and next year it's off the increase, it's not off the base. So we'll take it while we can. That's not gonna be a number we're gonna be increasing in the future. We're already looking at, you know, the baked in stuff, healthcare's gonna go up, teacher salaries are gonna go up. So where, where can we save? And behooves us to, to take money today than try to grab it down the line, cause that's just gonna add to a variance in the future. If we're below 10, we can bank more money today. That's the environment we're, we're living in.
I would agree with you. So is that your motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that after, I mean, we, I don't know off the cuff exactly all those little changes we just made, but, um, taking a surplus that brings our education spending up to eight and a half. I don't know that number off the top of my head what it's gonna be, but it'll probably be somewhere in 50 to 80 range from the surplus.
Any discussion?
That's a separate line on the.
That would be a separate line, yep. I mean, if, we're giving money back to the, make this school better budget. I mean, it, we're not taking it really, we're just moving it around, shifting it.
Taking 80 puts you at 8.1.
Even with the new, with the 5,000 in there?
Yep.
Make it an, what's an even 100 do?
Louis, did you hear him?
Yeah.
Parking space for me in too? That doesn't cost anything.
I'll buy your sign.
Eight three you said?
Eight point three.
So the capital improvement, um, can be used. So, the capital improvement, um, can be used for repairs. It could be used towards the built, the second floor.
Emergency repair.
Emergencies. It could be used for a lot of different things, correct? Because we, we use it to help pay the architect for our specs before, right? So this gives us a little bit more flexibility.
Remediation is worse than we think. I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff.
Yeah.
This isn't a, this isn't a brand-new building.
You have another flood.
Don't say that.
We should get our PCB results back.
Oh, my gosh. I don't, I'm like, please just let me get through the holidays.
Not going to let you get through the holidays.
No, we'll let you know before Christmas. I'm like, do you want to know after Christmas, please? They sent some follow-up questions about PCBs to us yesterday.
So did you want to amend your?
Yeah, I'd amend it to, to make that line add them 100,000. As part of the vote.
On, on a warning.
On the warning to take 100,000 of surplus and put it in a capital expenditure budget. Versus using it as revenue for the 2024 year.
Any discussion? All in favor?
One option, one other option that you could, if you could either do a hun, the flat amount of 100,000, or you could put, um, we've done it where you do a percentage. So, and you could do like up to 50% of the surplus. So the surplus is 203,000. If you did up to 100,000, that gives you the option. If you changed your mind in a few months based on how the vote goes, um, I mean, it still allows you to do the full 100,000 if you want. It, it's just throwing out another option there, uh, truly.
It just gives you more flexibility is what you're saying, if you put up to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, that's better language, thank you.
So up to 50% is what you would recommend?
Yeah.
If, that would include the 100,000 that you want to do, yes.
Yeah.
So are you amending your motion again?
Yes.
So, can you just state the motion out there?
Motion is to, um, warn, uh, to hold back 50% of our surplus, up to fif, up to 50% of our surplus, to holding capital reserves versus returning as revenue. Now, on a specific warning, do we have to put what the surplus is, or do you just have to put 50%?
You don't put the, the amount on the warning. I mean, our surplus amount will be, um, on our flyers that we send out as well as in the town report.
For those of you, okay, I'm, I like that better.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So thank you, Colin. All right. So, with, um, so you'll figure on up to 50%, which would be like 101.5 or some, or something like that? Or are you figuring?
I'll put 100,000, I'll take 100,000 out of that surplus line-
Okay.
-as our estimate. But I mean, so the tax rate will represent $100,000. But when you actually make the decision to pull that, we don't have to make that today. You, you, you can make it at any point, um, in the, in the, in the future. Between now and when we decide to pull it.
Does anyone have anything else to add to the budget? Or take away from the budget, or have any thoughts about it? Or in other words, does anyone want to make a motion about the budget?
I just, um, secondary expenses, um, why, why are we jumping that so much?
So that, that's based on an estimate of students as well as an estimate of tuition rates. And we won't know, we should have some better ideas of what tuition rates will be at the next meeting. No one's really provided announced rates yet.
So, uh, would, I would recommend then that we table it so that we have the final numbers for next meeting?
Correct, I would not recommend you approve a budget tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's-
Well, I'm just wondering, that specifically, I mean, we budgeted 3.3, we only spent 2.8. Are we, are that many more kids going into high school? And is there a big population change from our seniors graduating to our new kids?
No, we're just anticipating Rutland City to have a high increase, as Louis talked about before, in tuition, and possible build back. Correct, Louis?
Bury them in the ground.
Uh, I mean, comparing actuals to our budget, I mean, there's a couple of factors you need to take into account. One, I mean, there's two years worth of increases that are not filled in. Because you're, you got two years between last year and, and next year. Um, but the other thing too, that, that can happen, and sometimes, so sometimes our budget is a little bit conservative because we're budgeting for all students. If, if students choose to go to Stafford, then we don't get charged in that tuition line for those students. Um, so we don't know how many students are going to go to Stafford. And we can guess and take out tuition for those students. But if the students that are going to Stafford now, usually they go for two years. So the ones that are going now as seniors won't be here next year. The ones that are going as juniors normally will continue going as seniors. So we don't have tuition budgeted for them. Um, but any new juniors, so the soph, current year sophomore class that decide to go to Stafford, we could potentially have savings for them if they, savings in this line, if they, if they go to Stafford. So, I mean, if we needed, or wanted to potentially cut, we could look at this line and guesstimate how many students we think would be going to Stafford. That's always an area of potential savings. The offset is we're, I'm being very conservative with my, or not very conservative, um, I, I'm being-
I got you.
I only estimated 3%. And, and we know that Rutland City has come in at 10 and 14% in prior years. So, any potential savings that we have on the Stafford side could easily be eaten up by increases above 3% for, um, Rutland City, Mill River, wherever our students are going, Slay Valley, um, if, if those increases come in greater than 3%.
One would assume with the new calculations, Rutland City is going to turn out pretty, pretty good though. Without whacking us, if I'm speaking to them politically, right? I'm guessing their equalized pupil number looks a hell of a lot better.
90% free and reduced lunch.
So they don't need to get it off the backs of sending towns?
Mm-hmm.
But we're not in control of them, but maybe they're listening.
I, I wouldn't even begin to guess.
Just saying it for the public.
Right, so does anyone have anything else tonight? Or we'll move on to that for next, next time?
So are we gonna, um, we're gonna prove it next time?
Hopefully, yes.
Thank you for all the information, Louis.
Yes, thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
You're an excellent teacher, Louis, good job.
Thank you.
Um, and if anyone had any questions about the financial reports, you can ask Louis as well?
I think, you know, page, the last, last two pages are great to help explain it to folks and-
Yeah.
Show them where the numbers come from.
And Louis does a really good job at pre-town meeting because it's, I need to hear, I've heard this a million times and I'm, I still need him to walk me through all of that. From property yield to the tax commissioner, because those questions will get asked at pre-town meeting. Along with how many kids ride the bus.
And you won't be at that meeting, or you will be?
They do, there's usually one guy, right? How many kids are on each bus? He's like, I have one right here.
Not that I'm anticipating, but what's helpful too is to show like exactly the 7.17, like what of that's discretionary that we can even-
Well, it'll be higher now, right?
Yeah, a little bit, but sell that. But to say to people, oh, that's too high, like, well, then it's, it's cutting people, it's cutting teachers. I mean, a lot of this is baked in, guys. And to have that real explanation, that people are like, that's where it comes from. And if you want us to go lower, that's what it's going to look like.
All right, and our class sizes are not small.
I always thought, and when I wouldn't, when I would like to present, especially education budget, so it's because it's what we need, it's not because it's what I want to spend. And, and looking at what I value, why I'm on this board, this is, this, I value our kids, my kids, our teachers. We're also an employer, and we're a big part of Rutland County as far as the teachers and, you know, whether they're low-paid or not, we're a pretty big employer across the SU as well. And this is important for this community, and this is what our kids need, and this is what, you know, this is what we have to spend. That's why we're presenting it. If I thought differently, I'd slash and burn it, and, but this is, you know, probably not as much as we should be spending, but that's why I like to present it that way.
All right, moving on to policy. Um, we have four second read policies. Um, B4, the Notice of Nondiscrimination. C1, Board Meetings, Agenda Preparation, Distribution. D2, Professional Development, and F12, Weapons and Firearms. I need a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve those?
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then there's two first-read policies. One is F3, which is the GRCSU Driver's Education for Resident Students in Tuition School Districts. And F8, the Pre-Kindergarten Admission. And the policy committee spent a lot of time comparing the driver's education, um, policies that were around the SU and came to one that was very similar to what Rutland Town had before, with just an increased amount of up to 550 instead of up to 400, um, to be reimbursed to parents that are not able to, um, get their student enrolled at the school that their student attends, or, um, in at least one SU school that they tried. So, um, and then the pre-K admission, uh, we, the policy committee got some feedback that it was very confusing the way it was laid out before, so tried to clean it up a little bit, um, as, to just kind of the thought process of how people are put on the waitlist.
This is the first read?
This is a first read.
Okay.
So, I would need a motion for those first reads to move them to second reads.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion?
About policies?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, our next upcoming meeting was originally scheduled for January 9th, but because Louis is not able to be with us that evening, um, there, we need to change it. Um, so-
Tina, before you, um, so I did clarify with Christine Magennis that the date of 23rd is not yet set.
Okay.
Um, I do believe that the, uh, this Rutland Town Select Boards meet on the 19th. Last year, we received notification from them around the 21st, about which date. They have two scheduled dates, uh, in January, 1st to 16th, 1st to 30th. I, I, if I'm guessing, I probably would say that, you know, we're, we're looking at the 16th, typically look to do it earlier, but, so we'll know more about that. So I, I just say that's because if we look to move a week back, that the 16th is one of those select board dates that could be a potential, uh, pre-town meeting date. Just to throw another can in, yes, so.
So it sounds like we, we should meet before the first week of January then, if we can't meet the second?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, it, it, you know, we could still keep, but like, just knowing that Louis will not be available, and I know there are a lot of questions that you have, about finance, that you may want Louis at that meeting.
So, right now we have a SU meeting on January 2nd, so that is off the table. So, 3rd or 4th? Are you available both the 3rd and 4th, Louis?
I can't do the 3rd.
Yes.
Are you available the 4th? Sorry, you can't be here.
Um, it's my daughter's sixth grade basketball game against Rutland Town, here. So, and it's her first game. And I told all the kids here I'd watch.
Thank you for making that. I got a game that night, too.
Priorities. I don't think it'll last that long. It's usually typically not high-scoring, but it'll be exciting. So I can pop up here when her game's done.
He's got a game, too.
Oh, you have a game, too, nevermind, sorry.
Any day is good for me, so you guys coordinate. Fourth.
I can't, I can't do the fourth either.
Well, we could still meet here, we just didn't get, so.
And maybe we'll tend remotely.
What time is it?
Well, I would just put it this, I mean, the big ticket is passing the budget. Have you said your piece?
Seven o'clock.
Oh, wow.
In the event you have to be remote or anything as far as the budget?
Yeah.
Well, I guess that has to be the fourth then, right? Because we wouldn't want to do a Friday night.
We're, correction, we're not doing a Friday night. Like Saturday.
So the, the fourth is open. Copy what the fourth?
We have to. So, um, Chris, I'll, I guess, I don't know, agenda-wise, we will have to do it virtually.
Well, we could meet next week, too, if you wanted. It's my stand for a break, if you would like, or we can meet during the week of break. So.
I'll go in touch with you.
Yeah. Majority of the meeting will be budgeted, so.
Yeah.
Go to the fourth?
I guess, yeah.
Just back up, I didn't know we were done with the policies. We were remembering, did we read the second reading of the volunteers' fingerprinting?
Yes, we have, I think.
Did we bring that to the SU yet?
The SU does it first. And then it brings it to us.
I couldn't find it in the minutes, so is that in path?
Um, I-
I just haven't, and you don't have to look it up right now.
I was wondering, I was looking, Colin and I were both looking that up, and Mike was too, actually.
So we did some policy work at the SU last meeting, and I didn't see it in there, and then- if we could get an answer on that, because we have lots of parents running around getting fingerprinted right now. And if they don't need to be, that would be super awesome. But, again, you don't need to eat up time right now, but-
I'm pretty sure-
I couldn't, I couldn't find it, though. Or maybe you can, it's like, Chris, like-
It's D4.
Anyway, a lot of people are already getting fingerprinted.
Well, did you look on the, um, the poll, that SU website to see if it was, should be there?
I tried to look through the minutes and the ones we had up. But again, we don't need to do it.
I'll, I'll double-check with Christine and Debbie DeBrakis tomorrow morning and let you know, so.
It was our regulation, we did it here, I just don't know.
Yeah. Well-
That'd be great.
There are, I think that's the reason why we made the change to the volunteers, really for Rutland Town, um, to make things a little bit easier, uh, to get people in, because you have a higher parent participation than other schools in, in our SU, so.
It was adopted last month.
Yeah, so.
November 14th.
It was.
So it-
How come we couldn't find that?
Because I'm not good at that stuff.
I, no, we looked.
Yeah, we saw it.
That's why blame it's you.
I think, I found second read.
I only found second read.
Second read's adopted.
Correct, you adopted the second reads.
Perfect, okay, it's adopted.
We found the second read. I thought they were like, okay, we found the second read, we all did.
Yep, good.
That's great.
Well, we approved it. Um, in fact, uh, Colin actually, oh, no, it was Jeff. Jeff, um, moved to push the second policies through, so, yep. No, Jeff did. So yes, so it's been, it's adopted and it's on, updated on the website, too.
Oh, all right, I guess I need some help procedurally.
Now what do we do?
So when we do the first read, it goes back-
To a second read.
To the SU.
It goes, so, um, the SU and all the local boards have a chance to do first reads and second reads, but it starts at the SU.
Yeah.
So the SU decides if they're going to send it out to the local boards or not. So when they decide that their first read is, is acceptable, then they move it to the local boards as a first read.
But that's when we, that's our only opportunity to change it.
Correct.
And then we-
Pretty much.
We read the first, it goes up, and then we do the second at the SU?
And, so if we're happy with the first, it goes back to the SU, and then now it's a second. And then, once they second it, it goes to local boards.
Well, so after the second, it's adopted at the SU level?
Correct.
But you just said then it goes to the board level.
It go, at the SU level, it is, but each local board needs to accept it as well.
So have we accepted it?
Yes, November 14th.
That was not just the second-
That was the sec, the second read is adoption.
Correct.
For the local board, but the second read for the-
It's adoption for the SU as well.
Once all the local boards have adopted, then it's adopted by the SU.
It's like pending local adoption.
Correct.
Okay.
Didn't we get into a fight, though, like what if we say no, and everyone else says yes?
Yeah, that happened before.
That, that's happened many times over the course.
Couldn't talk to Chris, that's usually what we're like.
I have to say, it's happened a little less.
It's gotten much better since we, since we shifted the or.
The order.
Well, I guess, so my, my point would be then, it's, it's not adopted after our second read, it's after adopted after all the second reads.
It's adopted, it, it, at the Rutland Town level, if the SU has already sent it to us as a second read, then it's adopted as of that night. So is it?
But what if, what if, middle town then says no?
Then, then they don't adopt and they're not listed on the adoption.
Colin, there's a lag. So part of the reason why we structured meetings for, so when we go through this week, like with the gauntlet where we have all of our local boards, if everyone approves second, and then it goes before the, the following month, like, so like, you know, next January, like we have, say all these second reads, we go then to the SU board, and basically at that time it's just rubber stamping, because all the local boards have approved it, and that's all you need, so we're, we're ready to go. And that's why we shifted the, the order and the meetings around, was to stream on that process a little bit more. Because when you had, like, all throughout the month, it just, it got really messy, so.
So there's not a procedure with this, though, right?
No, that's for you to create.
Right. Well, we are, we have a procedure in place, and Debbie and, and Christine have that, so.
Okay, so I will get the procedure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Cause I see the policy.
I think you've seen the, you've seen the procedure before, so, but you'll, you'll recognize it.
See, you weren't, you weren't at the last meeting.
What meeting?
Last school board meeting.
I was here.
Chris wasn't, Chris was.
Chris was remote. Oh, I was here till ten something.
Okay.
We're all here.
All right, so that being said, any teacher, staff, or community comments? All right. I need a motion to move into executive session for personnel matter.
Tell them.
Thank you, Colin. All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll take a recess until seven, seven or eight minutes until everything's cleaned up in here.